Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance and followed by an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands,
which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. All right. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments to the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. So up next will be your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some. And now I'll ask our clerk, Kimberly Moffett, to complete a roll call following this motion and the second.
Thank you. When I call your name, please just state your vote. May Pro Tem Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Granis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Up next will be a presentation of the fiscal year 2021 budget. And I'll turn it over to Town Manager Adam Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to review the budget as we have discussed with us for the past several months and follow to the deliberations from council already on this same subject. First, I'd like to review the schedule and the calendar that we have been through. Stacy, you can do that for me. All right. So our process is not a short one-month thing. It's something that takes us really the better part of almost half of a year. But back into December, February, departments were preparing and submitting their budgets to us. In January, we were getting information from departments on how they thought they would close out this fiscal year, which again, for a local government runs from July 1st through June 30th. So we're coming up on that ending. February, we had a kickoff public hearing on the budget to solicit input from the community on any thoughts they might have as we began our process. And also in February, the council met and discussed their priorities, particularly related to capital projects and how they wanted us to approach balancing the budget this year. March through April, spent a lot of time working with departments as we gathered information from them, reviewing their requests and getting additional information from them. And then in May, we met with all department heads after we had put together preliminary budget to try to alter the budget to get it into balance, which was a mixture of looking at revenues and expenditures. From that meeting, I come away and finalize what I offer as the manager's recommended budget to this council. And on June 1st, we met and discussed with the council what that recommended budget included, including a lot of assumptions, which we'll go through in a minute. And here we are on June 15th, which is our second public hearing. This one, following the recommended budget being available for everyone. And the law says that you, as a council, need to adopt a budget before July 1st. So that is where we are today. So I would like to just go over some data points for everyone. What you're looking at is a chart that shows the history of expenditures in the town of Clayton going back 10 years. And you can see that as we move to the next one, you can see, here is the chart that's going to show our revenues. Sales tax revenue in this case is one of our, one of our primary revenue streams. The green bars represent what we budgeted in these fiscal years, and the blue line indicates what actually happened. So we're in fiscal year 2021, and so you can see where our budget dollars are. And you can see the blue line where we expect to be. We, in other words, I'm sorry, we're in the year 1920, so you can see where we expect to end up. However, in 2021, we have decreased our revenue forecast based on the situation we're dealing with, with the COVID and the pandemic and the economic uncertainties. That is certainly one of the major assumptions that we have had to deal with in developing this budget. Our other primary revenue stream and our most, our biggest primary revenue is actually Advalar, our property tax revenue. And you can see from this chart, again, how that revenue is steadily increased over time. And this is one of those revenue streams that is always looking a year back. So in other words, we get our property valuation from Johnston County. And so we know what last year's valuation was as we're preparing this year's budget, which is why that's driving that increase. We certainly don't know exactly how much our property values are going to continue to increase in the, into the next year. But based on trending, you know, we usually make that forecast. Given the uncertainties, we certainly happen to take a look at that. But we are now what is about five months almost completed or five months completed and into the sixth month of this year. And we have continued to see property valuation changes in the form of new development in Clayton. This is another revenue for us, the utility franchise revenues. And there was a time where we thought this revenue might actually be on the decline in the past, but it is still one of a steady revenue for us. And we are projecting a slight increase going into next year for this revenue in alignment with where we've actually ended up last year. So another major revenue for us has to do with building permits. And so this is one of those things that is certainly susceptible to any, any kind of impacts related to recession and impact on growth. And so the original budget request that came in related to these revenues would have and did show an increase in this as our building development has continued to increase over the most recent history. However, given the recession, what we opted to do was be more conservative and, and draw and pull back that, that original request to increase that revenue stream and actually to flatten, flatten it out with where we expect to end up in this fiscal year. And so we're, that, that's why that, that bar looks even because we decided to pull back that revenue and be more conservative and not show growth, which we would have had we not been in that pandemic. So this line here represents the town's debt, which means what are we paying as far as debt service? And you can see over the years that we continue to pay down our debt, which is the good trend for us to be in. We certainly do anticipate there's going to be some additional borrows in the future and on the horizon. But in preparation for that, we've been able to steadily and continually pay off some of our existing debt service. So this, this chart represents where our debt is as a measure of our total expenditures. And so as our expenditures have increased, as the, as the green bars represent, we have been able to maintain our, our debt to that expenditure ratio in a positive light. And, and you can see from the more recent years, we've actually been able to decline some of our debt. So that, that's made that ratio even more favorable for us. Again, this council has been gearing towards issuing some more debt, which was reflected in the Parks and Recreation Bond referendum. So that, that certainly was us, you know, preparing for when we're going to be issuing some additional debt. But as of now, our, we're going to see our policy in just a minute, but, but we have a favorable debt to expenditure ratio. So another, another key important factor for us as we, we talk about budgets and revenues is what is our fund balance? And we use the term fund balance. That, that means some of our reserve, reserve dollars, not necessarily dollars tied to the budget, but maybe our, our checking account or we can use for rainy days or other needs. And the council has a policy, which we'll show in just a moment. But this is a snapshot of what our fund balance project, we project our fund balance to be at June 30th. We're obviously not there yet, but our projection of where we think we'll be with our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which we'll show in just a moment, is certainly within the council's fiscal policies. So let's, let's take a look at some of those policies. This council, again, has had the wisdom to have guiding financial policies. And we think this is a good time for us to review those. So you all can see that we're living within those policies and in many cases exceeding them. So one of those policies is that we want our, what do we want for our unassigned fund balance? So that, again, that checking account, we will, as a percentage of our net expenditures. And the council has a goal that we want it to be 30% or more, but we never want to dip below 20%. And so at this time, we are, again, based on that projection, going to be at about 28.71%. And this council made, has made some decisions as we looked at some of our capital spending or one-time spending, thought it would be wise to use some of those fund balance dollars to pay for some of those one-time costs. Again, one of the reasons you do that is you may want to stay out of debt. So you don't want to borrow for everything. So you want to do some pay-as-you-go approaches. And that's certainly, I think, some wisdom on the part of the council as we've tried to achieve some of your priorities and goals and some of our major capital projects.
Adam, if I may interrupt you for just a moment with a question or actually a comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the state statute for municipalities required to be a minimum of 8% of fund balance requirement for all municipalities?
Correct. That, that is the state's, state's policy. And of course, 8% is truly an absolute minimum. And that's, you know, if you get close to that, you're going to be getting letters from the state about what's going on with your finances. More practically, you are correct, Councilman Granis, that you want to be well above that for the purposes of no other than for issuing debt. Your bond and rating agencies want to see you have a healthy fund balance and that you're not getting close to those margins as a means to pay for debt that you may be incurring, which is going to be more favorable interest rates, among other things. So having a good financial policy that is well above that, that state mandate at 8% is very wise for us to have.
Well, the reason I brought that up is because of what our adopted council goal is. And which, quite frankly, I'm very pleased that we're as close to that as we are. Typically, we're right at it, if not just a shade over it. So I think we're doing a great job there.
Yes. All right. The next financial policy is debt as a percentage of estimated market value of taxable property. Again, this is one of those indicators that the rating agencies are going to be looking at. But it basically is saying, you know, for all of our, our taxable property value out there, what percentage do we have tied into the debt? And our goal is to have less than two and a half percent. And you can see we're well below that at less than 1%, less than half a percent at 0.48%. Debt service as a percentage of total expenditures, this is really a reflection of that chart I showed earlier. But you can see that for our total expenditures, we only want to have 15% of our total dollars that we're spending to be tied up in debt. And you can see we're well below that at only 5.4%. And this aggregate 10-year payout ratio is, again, the question is, over the next 10 years, what percentage of our debt is going to actually be paid off? And we, we've said as a policy, we want to have more than 55% of our debt to be retired within 10 years. And you can see that we're well above that, that we're, we're on track to almost 89% of our issued debt right now is going to be paid off within 10 years. So these, these policies have to do with how we run our utilities, our water sewer funds and electric funds. Very cash-sensitive operations. And so we want to make sure that we have enough cash on hand to be able to continue funding these operations. And our policy for the water sewer fund is that we would have approximately 201 days of cash on hand. On the electric side, it's almost 99 days. And you can see from, from the data that we are looking at, we're about 203 days on the water sewer fund and 119 days on the electric fund. Now, these are probably two, two financial policies that we'll be revisiting in the future with council. Probably wanting to strengthen these even a little more as of before, but we are within policy on both of these. So going back to the direction that I received from this council, it was stated to me really even before the retreat, council did not want to see an increase on the property tax rate, which is 58 cents. And we have certainly achieved that. But in addition, council wanted to see a budget that didn't see a lot of increases in fees and other rates if possible. And I think by and large, we've also accomplished that. The recommended budget continues to implement our five-year general enterprise fund capital improvement plans, which was also a priority for this council because you wanted to see us continue to get profit, major projects done, projects that you prioritized and given us in the past, and we're continuing to do that in this budget. So where, where we stood when I sat down with department heads after they submitted their budget was in the general fund, we were looking at a $3 million gap. But as, as of this presentation, that budget, that gap's been closed and budget, the general fund budget is $31.7 million in balance. Water and sewer fund budget is also balanced at $26.3 million and the electric fund at $15.8 million. Balanced, which means our expenditures and revenues are equal. We, we don't, and we don't have the legal ability to, nor would we want to ever pass a budget where our expenditures are more than revenues. And so that's where we are. And that's, that is also without any property tax rate increase, which will remain at 58 cents. So this was a very unique budget in the timing that the budget began. And so like, if you recall back to the calendar, we really start in earnest in December and departments begin submitting, preparing and submitting their budgets in the early part of the year. And if you take away the pandemic that happened, we were certainly on target to see really a, a really healthy year for us and going into the budget, some really healthy projections for where we were going to be going into next year. But of course, a lot can change in a day, in a month, and it certainly did in this year. And it really gave us a lot to think about, really right in the middle of trying to get this budget done and really almost after departments submitted their original requests. How are we going to react to the uncertainties? How long would this pandemic last? What would be the impact on behaviors related to spending? What would be the impact on behaviors related to development and growth? So there's a lot of questions. And what this council did give us some, we were very appreciative for was some additional time to think through some of these things. We typically are not this far into June still talking about the budget. But we felt it would be prudent for us to take as much time as we thought we could to let some of these questions play out, to see if we can get some of those answers. And it's certainly been, been challenging, but, but we had to come up with a lot of assumptions as we developed this budget. So I'm going to go through a few of these with you. First, the first assumption has to do with our property tax, our property values. Again, our largest, probably about 50% of our total revenues come from Advalar property valuation. And we do project in this budget that that's going to increase by 6.8%. And again, that's a reflection on actual property valuations, that dollars or values that are given to us by Johnston County. And we know those values are changing based on values that they've, they've assessed on those same properties for last year. Another assumption is really how, how well will we collect those dollars? And so even though we have pretty great confidence in what the values are, one variable is this, how will we, will, will this pandemic and recession impact our ability to collect those tax dollars? And looking back even to the last recession, we didn't see a big impact on revenue collection change, but we decided to be conservative and forecast at least a 1% decline in our collection rates. And so that was also built into this, this budget. The most volatile revenue that, that I think a lot of municipalities and counties are struggling with to how to forecast right now is sales tax. Sales tax is obviously dependent on behaviors. And what we can't know for sure is how spending behaviors are going to completely change. There's short-term behaviors and then there's long-term behaviors. When we began this budget process, well, like all budgets, we get some, some experts that guide us and give us some, some of their thoughts based on sales tax in particular every year. We want to know because there's some volatility in that. And at that time, those experts were advising us that we could see anywhere from a 1% increase in sales tax next year to up to a 3% decline in sales tax leading into next year. Well, you know, they admitted that there's, there's a lot of volatility in, in the variables they're looking at. And so we opted to go more conservative. And we are showing a 10% decline in sales tax revenue for next year. For a point of reference in dollars, every 5% of sales tax change represents $240,000. So to add another 5% to make it 15%, for example, you would have to eliminate from your budget spending another $240,000. And conversely, if you decided that's too conservative, we'd like to put it at 5%, we could add back an additional $240,000 in spending. Development revenue, as, as I mentioned earlier, we've built an assumption that we're simply not going to see an increase over the current year. And again, we are almost halfway through this year. And we actually have seen a slight increase in our development activity, at least almost six months through this year. So again, we can't totally foresee how the last six months of the year are going to play out. But at least trending right now is we have not seen a decline in our development activity. With some fees going up, though, other fees for services revenues in this budget are not going to exceed our current end-of-year projections. But what I'm not saying is that some fees aren't raising or are going higher. But what we're projecting from revenues from all those fees, by and large, is on par with what we expected to get to the end of this year. And then a huge assumption is that the state of North Carolina will not take additional revenues from local governments. And of course, we don't control that. And we're certainly seeing some significant challenges right now related to executive orders and in particular on, on utilities. And, you know, there's, there's a mandate or an order that we cannot disconnect due to non-payment on, on utilities. But what also is happening is that, and we're seeing a significant amount of customers that are not paying their bills. And those bills are continuing to add up. It doesn't mean that they won't owe that money, that's what they will. But we're getting concerned about their ability to pay those bills. So that's, that's one assumption that we can't completely know or control. Moving, moving forward, a really important assumption that we built into this budget is that the new water reclamation facility project, the largest project that the town of Clayton has, has ever had, must go forward. Timing-wise, we have to keep moving. And along with it, as we've been discussing in, in budgets past and in future, there is an additional combined water and sewer rate increase in this budget, approximately 9.4%. What that represents dollar-wise to what we'll say is a typical residential customer of 4,000 gallons per day is just north of $7 more per month on their water super bill. And we'll have a chart later that we'll, we'll review that data. Some other things we've worked hard at is we're not increasing any fees for solid waste disposal costs despite some contractual increases we've been able, we're going to absorb those costs. We're not increasing our electric rates. We've been working with a rate model and really trying to forecast, you know, ahead on that, working with electric cities. I'm pleased to announce that we don't anticipate a rate, electric rate increase in next year. I think a big, a big challenge in this year's budget was, you know, in a growing community like Clayton, we're seeing a lot of demand for services. And, you know, almost every department is, is looking at uptick in, in what's expected of them and how they're trying to deliver their services at the quality and level that we expect in Clayton. And with that came 23 requests for new positions in this budget. And unfortunately, part of the casualty of being so conservative in our budget was that we don't have an ability to pay for most of those requests. Now, a change from our last discussion was in the police. And you will remember that we had included four additional or four new patrol officers in our last budget meeting. Since our last time we met, we have learned that the grants that we had applied for and weren't, weren't certain at the time if we were awarded, have, we've been notified now and we did not get those grants. And so to keep the budget in balance, those four police positions have been removed. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, if you'll wait, wait on that when we get to the position part. But that is a change from what you, the council, have seen. And this still includes the, the one part-time police position and a human resource position that we will not fill until January. So some major, major expenditure assumptions here. You know, we have tried very hard to maintain our service levels across almost all of our departments in this budget. However, this pandemic has forced us to make some adjustments in a few areas, in particular, that I highlighted in the first bullet point. And in particular, the cultural arts library and Parks and Recreation, all a little bit different in the impact, but, but from a similar reason in that with the, the spreading of the virus, the ability to gather in public spaces and places for performing arts, for example, has been severely restricted and limited at this time. Now, we expect that that is going to change as the governor's orders and the phasing takes effect. But we still don't expect that we're going to be able to fill up our auditorium at full capacity. We really are, believe that's not going to happen by the end of this calendar year. We could be wrong, but that's, that's the assumption we built into the budget. Library, again, they've been operating really without people inside for several months. And just recently, we've been, been able to offer some curbside, curbside program or not program, but book, book and other material rental or checkouts. And then we expect again, as the phasing really begins to loosen some restrictions on getting people back into public buildings, we're, we're still severely restricted and because of the size of that building and the square footage, you know, that we're going to be able to bring people back in, but it's going to be on more controlled or limited numbers. And so we're going to be phasing back into getting the public back into our spaces. And then, of course, the challenges of offering programs and other things are, are, are just that. There are big challenges and question marks as we, as we try to understand how we're going to, you know, operate, but also be responsible in face of a virus that's very contagious. Last on the list is the Parks and Recreation Department. And of course, there's some big, big challenges there related to classes and athletic programs and people inside on a walking track. And of course, they're classified as a gym and those have not been allowed to be opened even, even yet. So we're, we're looking at how we're going to be able to phase back into this. And big assumption is that we still will have some, some fall programming and sports, but they're going to be more limited. And of course, the anticipation is that getting into the next calendar year, January, we're going to see hopefully a more return to normal there. Big assumption that the council had, had given us is that we wanted to see necessary capital projects continue, so they're not delayed in this budget. Also, continue to take care of employees. We do include Amerit and Cola increases. We do continue to provide professional development opportunities, albeit we have reduced those in the budget and given a lot of direction to staff, that to not anticipate a lot of travel between now and, and December, believing that there's still going to be restrictions and challenges with conferences and having, you know, large gatherings of people. And to that effect, we think mass gathering events will be limited to 250 through December. Again, that's an assumption. But that's having an impact on, on some of our, you know, what we're most well-known for in Clayton and some of our downtown events and other, you know, Fourth of July, that's already been impacted. Then, of course, as I mentioned, development activity will continue, but only at the current year's pace and not at an increase. And then, of course, a big, big thing that this council's already said and, and we're preparing to do right now is how we're going to report back to you all on a monthly basis at a minimum of how the budget's developing. So all these assumptions, sort of, are they playing out? And how are they changing? And will that necessitate budget adjustments after you all choose to adopt this? My sense is that yes, it will. And we're going to talk about that. So I mentioned this already, but, you know, there were, there were a lot of plans to do even bigger things in our cultural arts programming this year and performances. But really, this year has put a lot of that on hold. We are still going to have a Palladium Series, but we're looking at that really being in really next calendar. really next calendar year. Now, if things changed, maybe we could, we could do some things in this towards the end of this calendar year, but our budget is built on those, those performances not happening until twenty twenty-one. Uh, and so that's also made it very difficult to project revenues, shows and rentals and programming and sports and, and all these things. Again, we're expecting the major impacts to happen through the end of this calendar year, but with a hope that there's going to be a return to some, some normalcy, uh, starting in January. So those are a big assumptions we have right now. I mentioned fall sports and classes and programs. We're likely looking at lower participation rates through the end of this calendar year. Uh, likely not going to see rentals in this building, um, a government, a governmental building here, uh, until twenty twenty-one. And we doubt we're going to be able to sell out performances, even if we do get some things going on in Clayton Center, given social distancing requirements uh, that are in place. So I mentioned the positions and what you're looking at here is on the general fund side of our budget. Uh, these were the requested positions. And, and you can see, uh, what, what we're looking at, really the two positions, uh, and, and that are still in the budget, the new positions are going to be Human Resources Advisor. Uh, that comes, uh, and I'm still recommending that, but not, not, not filling that position until we get further into the year here and can see that our revenues are actually coming in as we forecast them. But what we, the, the big need there is as our depart, as our town of Clayton employees have grown and, and we're well, uh, well over, uh, I guess two hundred people now that work for the town, town of Clayton. Uh, yeah, we only really have two dedicated human resource, uh, positions, a director and, and another specialist there. Um, and that was one of the big feedbacks I've gotten from department heads is wanting additional HR help. And so adding another specialist or professional in that department is going to pay, pay huge dividends to our departments that are struggling to manage many of their HR functions. The second position still recommended is really some part-time dollars that we're going to put into the police department, which is going to help them tremendously and, um, some of their training needs and, and other, um, you know, you don't need a full-time officer for all the things they do sometimes when you have events and other things. And so having some part-time dollars are going to help them. Want to talk about the, the four positions that are no longer in the budget though. And I do feel, and as I said in my budget message, that they are, they are very important to the police department. And I would, I even said in the, in the budget message, if for some reason the grant dollars don't come through. And if our revenues and expenditures are in line and hopefully better than what we're forecasting in the budget, as I said, they're, they're very conservative. But it might ask of council would be that those would be the first four like positions are really the first four, first thing that we put back into this budget post-adoption. Uh, and, you know, that, that I just think is critical as we've seen, um, our town grow and especially in relation to the demand on, on our officers and meeting the, the the increase in traffic, the increase in number of businesses, the increase in number of residences. Um, that's a huge, huge need for them. They have not expanded significantly in a number of years. And when, you know, they really, really wanted eight positions, as you can see on the chart, uh, but we were recommending four. Um, and hoping that, that revenue cancels, since it didn't, I was looking very closely and would welcome councils on this, but we, we look at adding those positions back as soon as possible if our budget forecast comes in more favor than, than we are projecting. The enterprise side of this, we did have some additional position requests, but I did not include those. Um, at the, at the, by the time these, these came to me, we had not included them in our rate modeling and I did not feel comfortable including them in a budget request, uh, when they were not included in the rate modeling. We'll certainly look at that going forward. Um, but, you know, departments will continue to operate efficiently. Um, but we, we'll definitely take a look at those. You can see a lot of that's preventive maintenance and that's certainly an area we want to remain focused on going forward. So from an employee standpoint, what we're looking at is a, a merit increase and that's based on um, evaluation scores that could range from two to three and a half percent, uh, for employees. That would take effect, uh, July. We are recommending a cost of living adjustment, uh, which would take effect, uh, in January. And that would certainly be a situation where we would evaluate where we are with revenues and expenditures at that time. If for some reason we felt like, you know, the recession and other impacts on the budget were worse than our assumptions, then we would revisit that, that adoption. Um, so that, that's where there, those two points are. We do, uh, we are part of the state health plan and employer contribution increased as we budgeted a seven percent increase. That's not passed on to the employees. Uh, and that's an estimate that the state runs on a different calendar than us, so we won't know for sure what those dollar increases will be, although they, we do anticipate an increase based on what they've told us in the past. Uh, and the addition, the North Carolina Retirement Fund and, and that, uh, is a well-managed fund in North Carolina. Uh, but to keep up with those rising costs, um, we are expecting a, a contribution increase of one point two percent again from the employer. And that's consistent with what we've done in recent budgets in the past. So on the utility side, uh, we are not proposing an increase to our solid waste fees. Uh, and I mentioned no increase to electricity utility rates. However, the big, the big impact in this budget, uh, by a lot is the water and sewer combined rate, which would take effect July one. It is in the budget at a nine point four percent increase. We did want to, uh, and looked at what would it mean if we delayed that, uh, say push that rate increase back to October, wanting to get past maybe some of this pandemic stuff. Um, the, the impact is compounding though, if we look at it from the rate model, that if you don't increase it in July, it compounds the need you have, which means you're going to have to raise it higher in October. And we didn't like that number of eleven point seven five percent. And so we didn't put that in the recommended budget, but that certainly was, wanted you to know, we had looked at that and what that would mean. Of course, we've been talking about rate increases and, and for a number of years, and we're still looking at those going forward as the big, big need in order for us to, to be able to expand our wastewater capacity needs and build our new wastewater plant. Uh, both because of its aging and needs to be replaced and because of our growth. And so, uh, I mentioned, mentioned that in the first point there, uh, and, you know, we had looked at really right before the pandemic hit. One option was to look at, well, what if we, instead of spreading out more level rate increases over the next four years, what if we really just went for a bigger increase in this year and then would hopefully see a drop off in future increases in the outer years. But given, given what's going on with the pandemic, uh, that just did not seem like the right option to go for this time. And so we went back to a more leveled approach, uh, over the next four years. Stacy, if you can move that for me. So what you're looking at on this chart is, um, we've used this chart or something like it in, in, in the past to show how, how does Clayton measure against some of our, our neighbors? And again, the, the utilization of a four thousand gallons per day customer is, is the typical customer. Uh, and yeah, that's really the first column, uh, in this chart. The, the colors, what they mean, and depending on how your screen shows it, but it's a peach or maybe an orange color. Those represent communities that we, we were able to find in preparation for this discussion that have proposed, at least proposed rate changes. They may have already adopted them. But, but they were considering them as part of their budget adoption, just like you were considering that for yours. And you can, those were in orange or peach color. The, the blues, we didn't, we don't know for sure if they're not raising their rates, but we couldn't confirm that they were proposing a rate increase. And what yours, again, is confirms what I, what I was saying earlier, uh, um, a typical four thousand gallons per day customer. With a proposed nine point four percent rate increase, they're going to see uh, uh, the impact on their monthly bill approximately just a, a little more than seven dollars per month. And if we were to, you're showing two there, because if you were to go to the October implementation and that increase, uh, it would be a slightly higher, uh, somewhere closer to al- almost a nine dollars, a little less than nine dollars per month. And then you can see moving, moving outwards from that based on the consumption or gallons per day, how the rates change or are impacted by, by that same nine, nine point four percent increase. Uh, again, one of the directives from council was to keep moving on, on major or important, uh, capital spending. Uh, this is our general fund. Uh, some of these projects are, are carried forward from where, what we're already working on. Uh, some of these dollars are going to be things that are, are somewhat recurring, um, dollars that we might put in each year to, to keep going on our projects. Uh, and then others are, are other major projects that we've got to keep going. Some of these might be grant-supported. Uh, so it's not a, just take it away and that's an expenditure. So there's a variation across the board on, on some of these projects. If we move to the next slide, that shows the enterprise side of things. So our water, sewer, electric uh, projects. And of course, uh, you can see the list again. Some of these are just continuing from, from projects that have already begun. Uh, they won't, you know, hopefully, uh, may finish up in this next year, but some of these projects, you know, the life of them spans over one, one to three years sometimes. Some of these projects are again, recurring kind of maintenance needs, uh, and what is our most intensive capital spending is always going to be our enterprise, our water, sewer and electric funds. Uh, one, one piece of feedback you all had given to, to us, uh, the last time we discussed, as you wanted monthly updates, I can say that um, Nancy and Robert are working right now on, uh, what that will look like. So we're, we're getting geared up, I guess, to be able to report back to you, uh, on a monthly basis at a minimum on where we stand with the budget. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, um, I would like for the council to consider the, those four police positions as the first things to add back in this budget. Uh, given that we did lose the grant money for that, uh, but I still feel strongly that they are, they are an important need to this community. Uh, and again, we were looking at adding them in January, so we have a little bit of time. If we want to wait to see how sales tax revenues come in. Uh, I can say some positive news on that. Uh, if you recall, we had projected a, uh, we're using a ten percent decline in sales tax revenue based on where we think we're going to end up. And of course, where we think we're going to end up was given um, uh, more than a month ago. Since then, we have received, um, our sales tax receipts from uh, the state of North Carolina that have come through Johnston County. And interestingly, uh, comparing our April receipts, and April was an important month for us because we had March, but March, you recall, the pandemic hit and the, the governor's orders, you know, stayed home and all those things took place in March, but it wasn't the full month of March. But April does represent an entire month of going through all of the pandemic stuff. And, and in reality, what, what happened is our, our April sales tax receipts are actually higher this year than they were last year. Uh, and we're going to dig, dig deeper to try to, try to get better answers on why that is. Um, but from a practical answer to you, what that also means is that when I say we're going to use a ten percent decline in sales tax revenues for next year, we did not anticipate those revenues coming in as high as they did. So our end of year is likely going to beat our forecast. And I'm, I'm actually pretty, pretty hopeful that we're actually going to meet our budget this year on sales tax as opposed to not meeting our budget. And so that further is, means you have a very conservative, uh, budget estimate on sales tax. As I mentioned, it's about two hundred and forty thousand for every five percent. Uh, so it wouldn't surprise me if, if, if in reality, by the time this budget rounds out by June thirtieth, and again, we don't, we don't know till after the fact what our previous months, it's about forty-five days in a year, what our previous month's sales tax receipts were. Uh, it wouldn't surprise me if by the end and we're into next year, we might realize that we, we've actually budgeted more of a fifteen percent decline in sales tax based on where we end up. Um, so again, that's a positive news that our sales tax receipts came in higher. But I didn't change anything in the budget related to our, our forecast on that. And uh, I think a couple just follow-up points based on last discussion is we did, um, we did alt, uh, I should say this is about the police. While I did take the police positions out, I left in some of the capital expenditures related to those police positions, including the, the new vehicles, which is a big part of that. Uh, my thinking there is if we get to the point where you all are comfortable adding those back in, we'll already have the capital dollars for the police cars, so that'll help us. The flip side of that is if we see that things aren't going as positively as we'd hoped, those capital dollars are there and in reserve and we don't, we won't spend them. And that will help us hold down some of our costs. Uh, another point that you all discussed related to police was a K-nine officer, I'm sorry, a, a new K-nine to make it four. And that, uh, is still in the budget. There was some discussion, um, from some council members about not adding that fourth, uh, K-nine. Uh, but that still is in the budget. Uh, there was also discussion in the IT budget related to, um, so there was an increase in some dollars to spend on, on bringing in a VC three person onsite for us. And those dollars are in the budget, but redirected now to an IT study, uh, which will analyze our IT operations and budgeting. And come back to us with some, some strong recommendations on how we're going to manage IT move forward. So I think those are the points that I needed to make about what's changed and from our last discussion and would, um, be happy, uh, well, should also say thanks again to staff. Uh, everyone's help on this, council, your input's been, been really important to us. Uh, it's been a really, really big challenge getting to this, through this budget. Um, and I, I guess I would characterize it as it's, it's in largely a hold-aligned budget and that we're trying to maintain our service levels. Um, but it's built around a lot of assumptions. Uh, how long will this recession last? How deep will it, will it go is, is really difficult to predict. Um, but I feel like it is a responsible budget and maintains your priorities. And I'm happy to answer any, any questions and thoughts you have.
Questions?
Adam, this is Michael. I have a couple of questions. Uh, with respect to the professional development, uh, costs. Uh, you indicated that, uh, we're only looking at the second half of the fiscal year, uh, or six months, if you will. The budget that you presented to us, did that show only six months uh, of professional development or did it show a year?
It, it shows a year, but it's, but it's been, uh, and this was, this was actually a, a question that we, we addressed when, when we met with the department at our balanced the budget meeting. It's built on an assumption that professional development for the first six months is going to be different than professional development in the later six months. And so what we asked departments to do was to, one, either reduce it because they wouldn't be going to it because it might just not happen. Or possibly to modify their dollars based on it being probably more of a virtual environment, which would maybe eliminate things like overnight stays or travel expenses otherwise. So it's not completely void of professional development in the first six months. But it did reflect an adjustment to how we would achieve professional developments in the first six months.
Well, I, first of all, I believe there, there's a lot of value in professional development and going to various conferences and seminars and what have you. But by the same token, I, I think, and I'm not saying we don't do this today, but we really need to scrutinize the value that we get from sending people to various and sundry conferences or classes. Uh, and what I mean by that is, is will, does that have the ability to make them a better employee? Does it have the ability to enhance the quality of service that we provide our citizens? And can it actually help facilitate reducing costs? And as I mentioned, I'm not saying we don't do that today. But I think it would be very beneficial to ensure that when evaluating sending folks, that we absolutely take those things into consideration. Um, the other thing, or the other question that I had is with respect to the four officers, by not bringing them onboard now. by not bringing them onboard now, and I understand why, and I think that's a valid argument that you raised to defer that, but what, can you tell us what the impact of that could or would be by not bringing those officers in at this time?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll answer that first by saying we weren't planning on bringing them on until January 1. And so what I'm suggesting is I, I would still like to do that, but I'd like to give us a couple of months to look at how our revenues and this particular sales tax are coming in. And if they do beat our, what I think is a very conservative forecast, then I would like to get back on schedule and add that back into the budget. So that would keep us on schedule for what this budget originally recommended. And I would simply restate, I think these are critical positions to us because of the growth and the demand on the department. We are continuing, again, we're seeing increase in traffic, increase in businesses, increase in residences, in, increased in, in the need of the community and, and that thing, the time is, is, is.
I'd like to make, make a comment here.
For us to critical needs.
Addressing the need of the four officers, I'd like to see the justification for them. My gut tells me we need them, but let's show some justification for the need.
Are you referring to Mr. Holder that you would like to see some data reports on, on the demand increasing for the police department?
You're saying you won't look at, at bringing them on in January between now and say October, it would be nice to show why we need four more policemen. Can we do that?
Yes, we can certainly, we can, we could do that today, you know, I mean, I, I'm not literally, but I, but we, we have, we have that information and we were happy to share that with you between now and then to, so you can see that.
I would like to see that.
Absolutely.
And I just want to bring, I just want to reiterate that, I just want to make sure that we're not, that no one's being put in jeopardy by bringing this on in January instead of letting it start in July. It, it sounds like staff, you know, has pretty well thought it out. I just want to double check and make sure we're not going to be jeopardizing anybody's safety and welfare by postponing it for, you know, six months.
Correct. And you know, I'm proud to say we are fully staffed in the police department today and we will continue to provide critical services. And if, if, if needs and, and similar to, you know, the recent weeks where there were a lot of questions about public safety and what was going on in our downtown in particular, we, we will always add additional police officers to any event or situation if, if wanted. So public safety is definitely not, not being jeopardized, but this thing, the, the strain on your, on your law enforcement is there as they continue to see an increase in the, and as we continue to grow. And we're happy to provide that data, but it had been our plan a long to add them mid-year and not on July 1. And I think, and I want to speak for the police chief, I think he's, he's comfortable with that schedule. Would he love to have him July 1? I'm absolutely certain he would say yes, but he also understands the, the limits on, on timing and even just hiring people, there's a process to go through. So I think we, we're comfortable with the January 1, but certainly as we see the dollars, you know, and how our revenues come in, it certainly is not a bad idea to accelerate that because the demand is there.
How about a question? Without the grant, what's the cost of the four police officers for 12 months?
Let me, Robert, are you, I don't know if you're on, able to answer that question, but I believe we had budgeted around $260,000. I want to double check.
That's correct.
That was a January.
That was our cost. That did not include what the grant was playing, paying, was it?
Well, the grant would have covered, and I'm going to, close to that, I think the grant was going to cover 114,000 per officer per year. That's going to be your benefits and salaries. So that, that was what the grant was going to, going to pay for us.
That was $456,000 in, $456,000.
That's an annual cost, yeah.
Annual cost, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
I've, I've got one. Actually, I got two for Adam. Adam, and I talked to you offline on, on one particular one year. For next year, we've, we've set aside $150,000 in public works for Lombard Street storm drainage improvements. I think I may know what that is. I'd like to get some definition on that when we talk about that offline. I think it's just the, the water runoff we've talked about for over a year going down Lombard Street, I think, but we can get on that. The only other thing I have, and it's called the Tyler Technology Conference. And I went through the budget, and I know this is for 21, but we've got six people going to a conference one weekend at $2,500 ahead. I'm a little concerned about that. I can see maybe sending two, but we sent six people to one conference. I, I think with the situation that we're in right now, we probably ought to step back and reevaluate that in six months since this is for 2021.
Right, and, and I want to, I want to be sure, and Nancy or Robert will have to answer this, but is the Tyler Conference, it's in the springtime, correct?
Correct. I believe it's in April next year.
Yeah, so we, we definitely, to, to one of your points, Mr. Bun, is we, we, we will certainly be well into our year before anyone is going to that conference. So if things were a lot worse than, than what we forecast, that, that among many things, we would certainly be taking a really hard look at. To your, to your point of six people or, I'm, I'm assuming that's right, I'm not looking at it, but whatever number of people, the Tyler Technologies is one of those things that it is the backbone of how several departments operate. And, and so the advantage of sending people to that is that they learn how to use the technology that we've invested a lot of money into to make sure that we're, we're doing the best practices and that they're learning. We, we obviously can't afford to send everybody, so there's a number, right? Whether it's two or six or something in between, and, and we certainly want to be sensitive because that's not an inexpensive operation. But the value in that, and I think to, to, I think the earlier point from Mr. Granis is we need to make sure that we're getting the value. And what I'm happy to do is make sure that, that any departments or any, any employees were sending these conferences come back and report very explicitly what we're gaining from that so we can continue to evaluate the value and need for sending people to conferences. Wish there was something more local on that, but, but that would be my, my thought is one, we're going to have six months here to sort of see where we are. And if, again, if for whatever reason our revenues are not meeting forecast, then, then we're certainly going to have to take a look at that and many things on how we're going to end up this year. That's all I have.
Adam, I've got just a couple of other things in general. I'm, I'm personally a little disappointed about keeping the K-9 in, in his vest. I get it. I'm a little disappointed about the gun range. I think the money can better be used, but I also get it. The last thing is, is one of the things that I would like us to really try to scrutinize in the future, and I know this could be difficult from time to time, but we have two categories which are a concern to me, one of which is miscellaneous, the other of which is contingency. And we have absolutely no description with respect to what either one of those are or what they purten to. And there is a very large sum of money throughout the budget for both of those items. And I, I can't sit here and tell you that they are being scrutinized or that it's very legitimate because I really don't know. And it, that does concern me. And I would like us to be able to have the opportunity in, in, if not this budget, but certainly future budgets, to look into both of those categories and try to minimize those. And I am sure some of these are exceptionally legitimate without a doubt, but I would just feel more comfortable knowing what some of these dollar volumes are going to in those two categories. That's all I've got.
All right, hearing no further questions or comments from council, this has been noted as a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and I will turn it over to our town clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not received any written public comments prior to the meeting this evening and also did not receive any requests to speak tonight at the public hearing.
All right, thank you. So no requests submitted and no one wishing to speak will be reflected in the minutes. So I will now close the public hearing. So the public hearing is now closed. For the record, written comments will be accepted from the public until midnight tomorrow. That's midnight tomorrow, June 16th, 2020. Public comments should be forwarded to the town clerk at kmothet@townofclaytonnc.org or via phone at 919-553-5002. All the comments that will, all comments received will be read into the record at the recessed meeting. The Clayton Town Council will take up this matter for deliberation and vote on June the 18th, 2020, at that meeting. So I believe we're going to need some form of motion or potential action for, is it the hold of public hearing to receive input regarding the proposed budget or to recess the meeting until June 18th? I'm not really clear on that.
Mayor, what we need is we need a motion to recess the meeting until June 18th at 6:00 PM. The public hearing was held tonight and the recessed meeting on June 18th. It will be strictly for you to take the matter up for deliberation and vote.
Okay, thank you for clarification. I'll entertain a motion.
To reconvene this meeting on June the 18th.
And also recess this meeting. And I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Do we need to get a roll call vote on that?
Yes, we do. I will go ahead and do a roll call confirming that we are recessing the meeting until June 18th at 6:00 PM. I'm going to call your name, just please state your vote. Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Granis?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk and Mayor, for clarification on the record, we are not recessing this meeting at this moment. This meeting will continue with the action as reflected in the agenda. At the end of this meeting, the meeting will be recessed to June 18th. We wanted the public to be aware that for budgetary purposes, for budget purposes, that the, the deliberation and vote will be held on the 18th at that recessed meeting. But the meeting tonight will continue for action on the remaining agenda items and then formally be recessed.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, for clarification on that. Thank you. All right, so up next under new business is the year-end budget amendments, and I will turn it over to our finance director, Robert McCann.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have six budget amendments that we need to ask the council to approve. These are for year-end closeout financial reporting purposes. I'm going to go through them one at a time. This budget amendment is a closeout budget amendment, and that arose to, due to the payment to the Archer Lodge to provide fire protection services for Riverwood, which is primarily attributable to the delay in starting the extension of paint and drive. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to entertain it before council takes
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, this is Michael. I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment for payment to Archer Lodge to provide fire protection services for Riverwood, which is attributed to the delay in starting the extension of paint and drive.
Second. Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Grantis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Thompson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, and I'll turn it over to the clerk to get a complete roll call on the motion, on the motion and the second.
Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Granis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
All right, the second budget amendment is related to the water sewer year-end closeout budget amendment. First, the first item that we're doing is we're transferring our system development fee revenues that we've collected during the year over to the Capital Reserve Fund, and that's required by state statute, the new system development fee legislation. We're also budgeting some additional revenues that we received from water sales, and we're going to use that to transfer monies over to the ECI Capital Project Fund for expenses that weren't eligible for reimbursement from the EDA grant. And we're also realigning our wholesale purchases, etc., budgeted here in our year. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there are any, before council takes action.
Questions or comments? I'd like to ask the attorney, can we, can we vote on all of these at once or do we need to vote on these individually?
It would be my, it would be my recommendation for clarity of the record that you have each budget amendment vote separately.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the item number two there, the water sewer year-end closeout budget amendment.
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Thompson and second by. Okay, I think we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Thompson and second by our holder. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, turn it over to the clerk for a full roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next budget amendment is the closeout budget amendment for the electric fund. And what we're doing there is we're realigning our revenues and wholesale purchase costs during year-end projections. I'll be happy to entertain any questions before action's taken.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the electric fund year-end closeout budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Thompson and seconded by Councilman Holder. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries and I'll turn it over to the clerk for a complete roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next amendment is the amendment to the ECI Blue Station Capital Project Budget Ordinance. That project is completed. It's going to be closed out for financial reporting purposes this year. And as you noted in the water sewer closeout amendment, we had a transfer going from the water sewer fund over to this capital project fund to cover those incremental costs that weren't eligible for the grant reimbursement. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
That we approve the ECIA ordinance 2020-06-06. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Grantis and a second by Councilman Holder for approval of the budget amendment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. I'll now turn it over to the clerk for a complete roll call.
You? Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The fifth budget amendment is a budget amendment to the Newt River Water Reclamation Capital Project Ordinance. What we're doing there is, as the council knows, we recently closed the financing for $15 million related to nutrient credit purchases we expect to make. And so we're adding this financing and budget to make those nutrient credit purchases. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions or comments?
I make the motion we approve item five, Newt River Water Reclamation Budget Amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Thompson and seconded by Councilman Grantis for approval of this budget amendment. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries and I'll turn it over to the clerk for a complete roll call.
You? Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Did we lose him?
Don't know.
Okay, I am back. I am so sorry about that, you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. Yes, I'm so sorry.
I just need your vote, please, on adoption of ordinance number 2020-06-07.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The final budget amendment is a budget amendment to the Northside Substation Capital Project Fund. This is merely a housekeeping item. We're going to formally close this project ass with this realigning some costs between expenditure line items. There's no cost. I'll be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Motion to approve the Northside Substation Budget Amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Everett and a second by Councilman Holder for approval of the Northside Substation Budget Amendment. Is there any further question? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries and I'll call on the clerk for a complete roll call.
You? Mayor Pro Tim Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Robert, for all that. Is there anything further that you need from us or?
No.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next up is staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Yes, Mayor, this is town manager and I failed to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and one slight adjustment to the agenda, and that is that we will need to go in a closed session. This will be under 11A pursuant to general statute 143-318-1A. And then it's going to be for two, which is to consult the town attorney and then also for six to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, I've noted that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Town attorney?
No report.
Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
All right, and other staff, we have a discussion on outdoor dining information and update. Call on our planning director and our economic development director to take it from here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Patrick Pierce. I'm the economic development director and I'm on my, this is my first time before council officially, so please be gentle. So we have been working, as many folks have, to figure out ways to assist our small business community throughout the, and navigate the COVID-19 process or crisis here. So we go to the next slide. So one way, we've been very, working creatively on this. Many cities have looked at outdoor dining space in addition to resource pages and social media and direct outreach and surveys. I would like to thank here just, it's been a really, an all-team effort here and I think probably almost every department has assisted a business in one way or another with a question here in terms of how to proceed through the changing regulations. So in one way that we've seen other towns, you'll see an example on your left, they guide that the city of Tampa, Florida put out here, but looking at ways to expound, expand outdoor dining into the public right of way. That could be sidewalks, that could be non-accessible ADA spaces, it could be temporary road closures during peak times, permanent temporary road closures, meaning shutting down a road for, you know, several weeks at a time and opening up to pedestrian only, and also ways to relax alcohol service here. So those are some of the ways that we looked at, we thought moving forward, and we'll go to the next slide, that the best way to do that was to find out what would be most impactful for our businesses here in, especially the downtown area of Clayton. So we had a survey that we opened up for a week from the 20th to the 20th, or to the 4th of June. We had, in that time, 75 responses, which is great. And with that, you can see here a good, different variety of business years here. This is obviously pointed more at restaurants and retail, but lots of responses either way. And given the circumstances, we were, you know, need to see that 75, or 97% of our businesses were at least open or planning to be open and those 3%, you know, we are ready to assist them in any way possible that have permanently closed or think that they will be permanently closed here. Next slide. So on that, we have, of the four options that we provided, this was the option that we found to be most, most favorable. And this would be to have businesses extend their operations onto sidewalks with the caveat of making sure they're leaving an adequate pedestrian corridor. Next slide. And you can see different from why that one was most favorable is while several of these options had a high positive impact, they also carried with them negative impacts and we really wanted to find options that were going to be most favorable and have, I guess, the least negative impact on our businesses, especially in this time. Next slide. So we did, what was, in that, in that extending out into the sidewalk area there was, in doing our research, was already allowed in the downtown overlay and does not require any action by council. So what it does require from a compliance perspective is a zoning compliance permit, which is, I believe, a $60 permit and a submittal of dimensional site drawings. And here is the code in front of you here in terms of what, the outlines are in terms of how to adequately meet those requirements in our code. Next slide. Other requirements also are insurance and making sure that there's liability insurance there as well as ABC. We knew that that would be an important piece for our restaurants that are, you know, where alcohol sales are an important part of their revenue. And ABC has, it's starting at the end of May, allowed a temporary extension of premises into these types of spaces for the service of alcohol for those that already have a license. And with the requirements, the full list there, but really those, making sure that they're approved and go through a process like the one that we have in our code with the local government and also a notification of either local law enforcement or their local ALE agent. And just to be clear, it does not increase the established maintenance capacity, but does just allow them more room giving the social distancing requirements. Next slide. So given that, our next steps here are to, as is recommended by ABC, wanted to have written guidelines of which this report is, this presentation is part of. Been working closely with Samantha and her team in planning on this and want to make sure that we do a level set with our staff shortly after this. And then we'll be working with the P I O and the DDA to distribute these guidelines to downtown businesses, really more as an FYI, given that this tool is one that is already in the toolbox. So this is one of the things, again, of many things we've been doing in terms of communicating and direct outreach and really doing all we can to help our small businesses downtown in this way, but really throughout the city. That concludes my, I guess, next, next slide. That concludes my short update here and welcome any questions you might have.
Patrick, I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
We were talking about a fee to, for permitting. How much would it cost and what's, what's involved when they have to provide a drawing? They've got to get an engineering drawing, which would probably be pretty expensive, I'm imagining. Is that what you're looking for or could they draw it out on a napkin and show it to you? I mean, I don't know.
I might, I might ask Samantha if she could weigh in on that one because I'm not entirely sure of the level.
And with the times being like they are, I hate to put any more strain on any business in the town. Is there any way we could waive that, what'd you say, $60 fee?
I believe that's what the cost is.
Good evening, Samantha Woolenweber, planning director. The fee is, for the zoning compliance is going to be $50. We will review that internally. And the requirements is mainly going to be outdoor dining in the public right of way. We still have to maintain your ADA compliance and to make sure you have enough clearance on your sidewalk for everyone else to get by, even if there is outdoor dining. So for this, this point in time, there is ordinance requirements in the downtown overlay regarding what that site plan should look like. We would reference those, but there would also be some sort of interpretation and guidelines on how we would reflect those due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
What I'm hearing you say then is there are, when it, when it comes specifically to the drawings, there are requirements that are, there are things that are required in that drawing. So, you know, to use Councilman Bun's, Bun's words, you can't draw, you can't draw it on a napkin. There are some, there's some things that you need, that we need to make sure that they understand, that they need to have as a part of that drawing when they're making this application request.
I appreciate you breaking that down for me, Charlie.
Yeah, absolutely. We will, and we'll guide everybody, you know, step by step and making sure that the site plan that they provide shows what we need. And if it doesn't, we'll help them. We'll do everything we can to make it a smooth process for them. It will be a requirement and we'll, we'll guide everybody through that step by step.
I'm just trying to take the financial burden off people who are struggling already, if you know what I mean.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Samantha, this is Michael. Has there been any consideration to waiving this, this fee that you're talking about, given the situation with the pandemic?
We do not have at a staff level the ability to waive a fee. As I understand it, the council is the one who would have to consider waiving the fees. It is something that has, has crossed everybody's mind on numerous different fees that the town has, but we can't at a staff level do that.
And what is the fee again, to be able to do this?
It would be a zoning compliance permit, so it's going to be a $50 charge.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What statement? It seemed to me that the cost to the town is in the range of the $50 fees. So if we do not, if we waive the fee, then we're, we're going to fund making sure these places are up to standard ourselves. I'm not in favor of waiving the fee.
I'm not really sure how much money we're looking at total with waiving the fee or not waiving the fee, but obviously we've already, you know, been instructed by the governor that we're having to work on the cash flow coming in from the electrical sales side. So I don't want us to set too much of a precedence by starting to waive fees for this, that and the other. I'd just rather err on the side of caution. I think it is, you know, a great gesture, but I don't, I don't want us to get to the point where we're setting precedents on, on waiving fees, even during a pandemic. But I'm good with whatever council decides. I just wanted to share that perspective.
Mayor, I have another question. Patrick, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Patrick, when do you feel that the, the final script will be rolled out to the businesses in the downtown area?
Our goal is to, would be to have a communication out before the end of the week. We wanted to bring this to council and kind of report to you first before we went forward, even though it is in, in existing code, but it's, again, we've been working with several inquiries from businesses on related matters here. So again, this is a, I think, a fairly easy kind of informational item for us to get out. So our goal would be to have something before the end of the week out to everyone.
Well, I certainly want to thank you and your staff for pursuing this. I think it's another opportunity for the downtown business owners to, that, that could conceivably help them out and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sir. And I obviously want to thank Samantha and And I obviously want to thank Samantha and the planning team because a lot of this is going to fall on them as well in terms of hopefully lots of activity. So, um, thank you all.
All right. Any further questions or comments on this? Okay. If not, then we're going to jump on to the next item, which is the State Library of North Carolina Grant, the Active Reading Experience. And I'm going to give the floor to our library director, Julie Garrison. Julie?
Hi, everybody. It's good to see y'all tonight. Just wanted to let you know about a grant that I have, that we wrote earlier this year and just found out that we've received. I had actually planned to tell you all about this way back in March, I think, but then COVID happened. So, and we weren't really sure what was going to happen, but just found out this week that we've been given this grant. So I want to tell you a little bit about it. So it's called the Active Reading Experiences Grant. And back in January, when I was working on getting it started, a couple of things sort of helped us decide to do this. We have, before COVID-19, our preschool and baby storytime programs have just been going crazy. We have tons of people that come to them. We consistently meet, sometimes almost exceed our capacity in our meeting room for our programs. As of January, our baby and preschool storytime attendance was up thirty-seven percent from the previous year, so more than five hundred fifty more participants in the previous year. So we knew that that might be a group that we needed to look at. And then according to our 2018 American Community Survey, so this, these numbers are a little bit old, there were a little over five thousand families in Clayton and twenty-three percent of those families have children who are under six years old. Twenty-two point six, something like that, have kids who are under six through age eighteen. And then as I was kind of digging into the data about what we might want to do for, for our little ones, I came across some kindergarten readiness data, and this comes from M-class. And looking at Johnston County and specifically at the schools in Clayton, I found that the kindergarten readiness rates have fallen since 2015, 2016. This is an assessment that, that kindergarten teachers give to their little ones when they come in at the beginning of the year to see if they are ready to start learning. And it showed that we had fallen four point two percent from our numbers in 2015 and 2016. So I think we were hovering around forty-two percent of kids are ready to do that kindergarten work, and now it's around thirty-eight, thirty-eight percent. So that's a big concern because when kids start out behind, often kids from lower economic areas, when they start out behind, they never catch up, or it's very difficult for them to catch up. And so we feel like we're perfectly positioned to help deal with this. And so this told us that, one, our families want to engage in early literacy programs. They're hugely popular. They, the people who attend them are of all races. We have men, women, we have all ages of grandparents, caretakers. So we have a really great section of our community. It's beautifully diverse section of our community. They really want to teach their kids what they need to know. So we have a lot of families with those children, and our kids really need more tools to get ready for kindergarten. Next slide, please. So I wrote this grant, it's called the Active Reading Experiences Grant, and there are two parts. The first part is that we're going to purchase thirty-five kits to help kids get ready for preschool and kindergarten. Those kits have games, books, manipulatives, which are like objects that the kids play with to teach them different things, flashcards, and then also instructions for parents. We're going to be working very closely with the Partnership for Children of Johnston County. And that partnership, they're going to be writing up instructions and activities for us to include in those kits. We'll also receive shelving to house the kits. So that's huge. It's a couple thousand dollars worth of furniture that we're going to be getting to do those. And then the other part of this is that we're going to be able to offer four workshops for parents of young children. They're going to be caught, taught by an instructor over at the Partnership for the Children of Johnston County. And each workshop, the parents will receive two books, and then they get information about how to read with their kids, which may not seem like you would need help to do that, but if you didn't grow up in a family where you read with children, or you didn't grow up in a family that did this or that spoke with their children, then this is really valuable information. So it's going to be a great opportunity for us to give free instruction to parents and families. Children are involved in the workshops and they'll get to experience these. And I'm already working with the instructor for a contingency plan if we're not able to meet in person within the next year. Next slide. So there are just a few pictures here. I'm trying to point, like you can see where my finger is going, but you can see some of the materials that we've got in there. We have a community kit, we have family kits. And we've worked really hard with this project and with all of the things that we've been doing in the past year to really show not just one type of family, not just one type of person. We are working really hard to show diversity because our families are diverse, our kids are diverse, we have people from all backgrounds. So when the kids get these kits, they're going to open them and they're going to find kids who look like them, they're going to find families who look like them. And that is a great place to start the conversations that we really need to be having right now. So the total amount of the grant is actually about fifty-seven hundred, but the state library will provide a little over fifty-two hundred, and then our match is only five hundred and eighty-six dollars. So it's a great opportunity. In fact, our match is only ten percent because we have that good partnership with the Partnership for Children of Johnston County. Do y'all, that's, that's it. Just a little update for y'all. Do you have any questions or anything, any concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Ms. Grantis.
Julie, you never cease to amaze me. Between you and your staff, you guys have come up with so many different creative programs for, for children as well as the library. And, and I just want to acknowledge you and your staff for continuing to do a great job in that area. I, you never cease to amaze me. So thank you very much for what you're doing and congratulations.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Mr. Thompson.
Joy, I just want to echo that and, and just say how you, you show us every single day how you're a master of your craft and how, you know, it just, it makes me feel good to know that with all the bad things going on in the world, that you bring a breath of positivity and that you have us on the cutting edge of how to prepare our future. Because, you know, what this grant's all about is preparing the future generation who will be sitting in our places one day. And I really appreciate what you're doing for that.
Thank you. And I have to say, my staff is a huge part of this. They are all working really hard right now. So I, it's not, it's not just me. I'm just, I'm kind of the mouthpiece, but thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I'm really excited too. Thank you for this. And I'm having a little bit of a flashback because those different occupational weebles, I will call them, I don't know if they fall down or not, but I just think it's such an ingenious way and, and you guys are just thinking so out of the box on meeting the community needs and it makes me proud. Thank you. All of you are old enough to know what a weebull is for the record. Just, it's not just me.
We know weebles.
Okay. Just checking. All right. Is there any other questions for Joy? All right, Joy, thank you so much. Uh, now we'll move on to informal discussion and public comment. I think we already stated for the record that there weren't any comments for this meeting. I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a short statement, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As you all know, I submitted comments regarding our budget work session that we had on June first, which quite frankly, I think overall was, was very, very good. But there was one area that, that concerned me somewhat, and that's what this comment is about. And I just wanted to get it on the record. While I understand that I asked an abundance of questions relating to the budget and further understood that it may have taken a while to answer those questions that I asked during our session, I was very disappointed that I and the council members and the public did not take the opportunity to hear those questions and answers during our session. I acknowledge that I said I was all right in receiving the answers to my questions by e, an email response from the manager at a later time. Unfortunately, I believe I made a mistake. I should not have agreed with receiving the answers to those questions outside of our workshop. Furthermore, by not allowing the questions to be asked and answered in this forum, it eliminated the opportunity for further discussion pertaining to some of those questions and answers. This situation, I think, was unfortunate. Allowing the response to these questions to be deferred and done through email was wrong. Most importantly, I did not allow the public to hear the questions or the responses during the course of our workshop. The public had a right to hear those questions and answers at that time, and we as a body did not allow that to occur. For this, I take full responsibility, and I am sorry that I agreed to such a request. I realize that questions and answers will be a public, in the public record, in what I believe to be in the form of an email, but I think the public did have a right to hear all of the questions and answers during the course of our budget hearing and not at a later date. And for that, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else's comments from council? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Jody.
Mr. Holder.
I thought the budget session inside the council chambers.
So we'll take that under advisement. All right. Is there anyone else with any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I believe.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll call on clerk for a complete roll call.
Thank you. May approach, M. Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis.
Yes.
Councilmember Holder.
Yes.
Councilmember Bun.
Yes.
Councilmember Everett.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think at this time, town attorney, and you may have to help me with procedure-wise So, uh, I think at this time, uh, town attorney, and you may have to help me with procedure-wise on this. I think we are now, uh, uh, ending this Zoom.
Thank you.
So now I will entertain a motion to recess this meeting until June the 18th at 6 p.m. Thursday, June 18th at 6 p.m. I'll entertain a motion.
No move. Thank you.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem Thompson and seconded by Councilman Bun. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like so? Motion carries. Will you let me run this meet? Roll call. Kimberly.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grantis?
Yes.
Councilmember Holder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bun?
Yes.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to get a Snickers.
I want to get a pizza.